This is crap and I can't change.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call the director's meeting to order for Monday, February 1st, 2021. Do we have any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, city, yes. Turn on your mic.
I'd like to turn on my mic so that I would like to discuss public comments by multiple means.
Okay, yes.
You mean the agenda for the director's meeting?
Yeah, the agenda for the director's meeting.
Yes, I wasn't trying to change the agenda.
For the big meeting.
No, just anything else you'd like to have added or subtracted from the agenda. The directors?
Thank you.
Discuss. Open, okay. Seeing nothing else, city clerk, you have some changes, thoughts to our regular agenda?
The only change really, or notation would be, is we carried over items that would have been normally introduced on the 25th of January over to this meeting's agenda on February 1st. And for our public hearing resolutions, item 5A through 5D, item 5B does have two motions, a motion number one and two.
That's five delta?
Five B isn't Baker.
Baker, bravo.
Bravo. So there's two motions. Thank you. That was loud.
Okay. Anything else at this point, Sony?
No.
Okay. We did have one motion to amend, okay. Okay. Seeing nothing else, mayor.
Yay.
Yay. Look, she's got a shovel. No. I won't go there.
Good afternoon, councilors. Thank you for having me down here for the director's meeting first Monday of the month. It's nice to be with you and unlike your smiling mask. I just wanted to touch on a couple of topics and of course take any questions you may have, but just talk a little bit about snow, about vaccines, about micro purchasing program that you'll see soon on your agenda, and just a quick update on the climate action planning process. So first with snow, I know that all of you will join me in thanking the crews, the city crews, the private contractors who cleared the city streets after the historic snow event we experienced last week. They were working 12-hour shifts back-to-back, day after day. It was like nothing any of us have seen in recent memory. In fact, it was the, you know, the single biggest day of snow that we'd seen in 20 years, and they really had their work cut out for them. And I said also, thank our residents who helped dig out parked cars, who helped dig out their neighbors. This was really an all-hands-on-deck experience for everyone. I know you've probably been responding to constituents who've given you plenty of input and feedback on how that experience went, both good and bad, and we actually really, you know, value that input because, you know, the next snow could be just around the corner, and we want to make sure that we take the lessons learned and are continuously improving with every new winter event. And of course, that's part of this process this year, thanks in part to you all and the input from last year's snowfall. We did launch a test program this winter, or what my kids call the reason why they didn't get an entire week off and only got three days off from school in this snowstorm, because that test program resulted in our private contractors actually hitting the residential streets 37 hours sooner than we would have under the old plowing program. So we got a 37-hour head start. And as anyone who's ever scooped a driveway or a sidewalk knows, like, a day and a half matters to the quality of the snow and how well you can clear it. So we were happy with that success, but we are continuing to monitor feedback from residents. People can still call if they have concerns. They can call the L T U. And we also have, of course, uplink at uplink.linkin NE.gov. And crews have been out responding to resident requests for service even today. So that work will continue until those requests are done. With regard to vaccines, we're really pleased with the success of our mass vaccination clinics. We've had them back-to-back Fridays over at Pinnacle Bank Arena. That site has been chosen, and this is really important to understand, that site has been chosen because of its accessibility, because of the adjacent parking which we provide for free, because it allows for spacing and safety for those both getting their vaccines and those administering them. And so this has been a crucial step forward in launching the vaccination efforts of our entire community. We've seen over 4,800 people in the healthcare professions vaccinated over the course of those two events, which is progress, and progress we're proud of. I'm really proud to announce that we are winding up Phase 1A and moving into Phase 1B this week. So we will be moving on to the next tiers of prioritized groups to receive vaccine. And Health Director Pat Lopez will share more details, of course, about that effort, which will really start to look at vaccinating our residents who are 80 years and older, along with other prioritized groups. We still have issues with supply, as does everyone everywhere. And what we can tell you is what we are told by the state, because the state is in charge of determining the allocations that we receive as a county. And right now, based on the doses that are allocated to Nebraska, Lancaster County can expect to receive about 3,900 doses per week. That could change. The good news is, this rapidly evolving situation includes the opportunity and possibility that we will get more doses in the coming weeks, and we are hopeful about that. We know that Moderna and Pfizer are working very hard to step up production, and that there may be the potential of an additional vaccine from Johnson &amp; Johnson if they seek and receive emergency use authorization. So we are, we have continued and will continue to make sure that we're ready when we get more doses to get them into people's arms. For those who are interested in taking the vaccine, we've encouraged them to sign up at our local registry at covid19.linkin NE.gov. I hope that you're able to refer people to that registry. It is the way that we will get people notified when it's their turn for a vaccine. So it's a real important communication tool. They don't need to sign up at ours if they've already signed up with the state and vice versa. These systems have been built so that they speak to each other. Data should flow seamlessly. With regard to micro purchasing, this is part of our efforts because throughout the pandemic, we've been looking at supporting and protecting lives and livelihoods. It's coming out of the work of the Mayor's Economic Recovery Task Force. And as you know, we had sort of a community-wide launch of a buy 1% more local campaign. We've been encouraging residents to shop local. We've been encouraging businesses to source more of their needs locally from businesses right here in Lincoln. And this is a way that the city of Lincoln can help out by looking at our purchasing policies and creating an opportunity with a category of micro purchasing to make purchases with local businesses based on reasonable pricing without a competitive bid is an opportunity that we really want to seize. So I look forward to your hearing on that, your thoughts, as we move forward and work to support our local businesses as they recover in this pandemic. And just a reminder about recoverlnk.com. That website is where we're also highlighting the work of local businesses, what they're doing to keep their patrons safe and their employees safe. And of course, hoping that that will help restore consumer confidence as people look to go out, shop, or source what they need rather than turning to national retailers. And finally, just with the Climate Action Plan, a heads up that we will be posting the updated Climate Action Plan to the website this week, and Mikiya Spazito, who's leading the Resilient Lincoln Initiative, will reach out and make sure that you have that link as soon as it is about to go live. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
We have any questions for our mayor? Nope?
Lot of information.
All right.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't do that very properly. Would you repeat the website for the link to register?
Yes. There is a link to the registry on our covid19.linkin NE.gov website. And that link takes you to a form that is available in English and Spanish. And it just asks for some basic contact information, a few other details, and then becomes a part of the registry. And with that registry, our health department will be contacting people who qualify to receive vaccine as soon as it is their turn. And if going to the website is not the preferred method, people can also call the health department at 441-8006. And at that number, they can receive assistance in filling out the form and becoming a part of the registry in English or a number of different languages spoken by our team over at Lincoln-Lancaster County Health Department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Director Lopez available. I think she knows the way.
Good afternoon again. I'll be brief so you can answer some questions. We are up to 26,718 cases. We had 68 additional cases yesterday. You know, this, our case report is lower than the previous week. We have been, let's see. Our seven-day average is 74 cases per day. So we're pretty pleased with that. It's still a little elevated, but we're moving in the right direction. Last week ending Saturday, the positivity rate was 26.7%, which was lower than the 33% reported four weeks earlier. And we've been seeing a declining positivity rate for the last four weeks. Our testing numbers are down. In the last four weeks, we're seeing an average of 3,200 tests per week. And they're seeing that across the whole state. We're not sure why that is, you know, but it's something we're seeing statewide. In Lancaster County, we've had almost 38% of all of our positive cases have confirmed, recovered. We have 198 deaths due to COVID. 74 of those deaths were in December, and another 34 deaths in November. So 60% of all deaths in Lancaster County have been reported in the last two months, December and January. And that's probably one of the things that continues to disturb me is that we have so many deaths occurring. And seeing them in some of our long-term care and assisted living facilities. We've had St. Eze's actually been going out and giving the monoclonal antibody, and we do see some real strong benefit from that too, in saving lives. Our hospital numbers are going down as well. So we have 55 individuals hospitalized due to COVID-19 as of midnight yesterday. And 34 of those were from Lancaster County and 21 are from out-of-county. And this morning, when I talked to the hospitals, one of them has no patients on a ventilator. And the other hospital has one active COVID patient and then three who are in the recovery stage on ventilators. That is one thing that we're seeing, that there is a fair, there is a fair number of individuals that are actually no longer COVID-positive, but due to the impact of COVID, they remain in the hospital for treatment for other situations. And the mayor talked about the vaccine registry. As of this morning, at 11:45 a.m., to be precise, we had 66,600 individuals registered in the registry. We are planning to move to Phase 1B. And Friday will be our first clinic for those 80 and older. We'll be contacting them tomorrow, those individuals that register, to assist them in getting their appointment time set up. We put in many additional things at Pinnacle to make the process really easy for them. Aides for mobility, additional staffing, prolonged periods of time. As the mayor said, we've done over 4,800 vaccinations there, but we've done a more compressed time period. So we're extending the timeout to allow additional time, having more volunteers there, and working through street signage and others outside and assistance. They need it with parking and getting them in. We're really excited to see that happen. We're planning, we hope to be able to offer. We had a one-time increase today of some vaccine available to us. And so we're hoping to increase our weekly count to be able to allow over 4,000 individuals to be vaccinated. Then the week of the 15th, we're going to allocate, as the mayor mentioned, we get 3,900 doses. We're allocating that all to the independent retirement communities. We're working with some pharmacies to be able to go in and vaccinate all those residents in their place of living. We needed to get a start in the community, and we needed to have enough vaccines so that we could provide it, offer it to every independent living facility at the same time. And it'd be really hard to pick and choose who should go first. So we're just trying to make sure we get it out to some of the really vulnerable that are actually out in the community. And we know there are vulnerable community members living in their independent retirement communities, but we'll be able to go right to their place of residence and vaccinate them. And we're also working with Aging Partners, with Randy Jones' group. We have many individuals that are living at home that his staff is assisting to maintain their independence, but they are homebound, and we're working, we'll be sharing more information, but we're working with one of the home health groups that is going to go in and vaccinate those individuals in their home, in their family member that's caring for them. So I'll stop there.
Do we have any questions for Director? Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
Thank you, Pat, very much. It's great to hear that the positivity rate is going down. I know our company, we track the testing rates both in Iowa and Nebraska. They've been testing more in Iowa. Nebraska has been testing less. So what do you attribute that to?
We just have people, people aren't coming in to get tested. And you know, the other thing that I always ask too is the hospitals, what is the ED department in urgent care looking like? And they're not seeing an increase. So those are some of the things we monitor about what's going on and looking at increased flu activity, because that tells us there's something respiratory which could be. And all of those numbers are down. But you know, we are, the university is doing saliva testing. And they're on their second round of doing saliva testing. And I'm not going to say what their positivity rate is. I believe it was below like 1%. So yeah, it was, so they'll probably do, we're working with them to determine their next steps. But it's a PCR test that they've been able to do through their veterinary lab. I know that sounds strange, but...
We're all animals.
I won't, I won't explain all that.
Yes, Councilperson Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Lopez, this may be obvious, but I want to ask it anyway. In terms of the residents in the independent living situations, if they're mobile in 80 and older, they could theoretically, and maybe they are registered to come on Friday, correct? I mean, so this will just, this is a way to ensure when we go to their homes that those that can't get out or are choosing or don't know how to register, a way to get to, a vaccine to them, correct? Okay.
But it's also, you know, they have a group of individuals there, and we probably have over close to 3,000 individuals. And it's an opportunity to do a large number of individuals in that age group.
Great.
And because they're where they're at, it's a concentrated number, just like us going to Pinnacle and offering a large number of vaccines.
Great. I think that's great. Actually gives me goosebumps, so, thank you.
And I should mention, we're working with the cultural centers as well, and reaching out to our communities to talk with them and several leaders. And we may call upon some of you to assist us with that.
Okay. I have one quick question. When you register for, on the site for the vaccine, what about registering on the state site also? What is kind of the rules there?
You can register on there, but all they do is turn around and send it back to us.
Okay.
So once you've registered, you're registered, is what I tell people. So if you went to the state site first, they're going to send it to us. But it's probably just as easy to register on our site, because then I know we have, we have the information right here as we're able to start moving through.
Because they were talking about some point about if you have certain conditions, you should register on both? I don't think, I looked at them both, and there really wasn't much of a difference.
No, we were waiting for their conditions, but finally, we just felt like we needed to move forward because people were really concerned. And so we went and followed the CDC guidelines for underlying conditions. So there's some slight variations, but I think we should catch all of them. And we actually have underlying conditions on ours. You know, some of the other health departments did not do that when they signed up for registration. So that might be where some of the confusion is, but we actually included that in ours.
Okay. Yes, Councilperson Washington.
Hi, Pat. I just have a question about, another logistics question. So a lot of, I'm seeing advertisements from commercial pharmacies saying, "We're going to have it, we're going to have it." And I just want to clarify that if someone is registered on the city or state site, when they're notified it's your turn, it will be their turn at a county-run vaccination clinic, not their turn at?
Right. I did visit with one pharmacy that I found out had a registration site, but no vaccine, and I asked them to please not do that.
Okay.
Till they had vaccine, because I said it's terribly confusing for people. And in our community, we are all working together to give one message and try and help people get vaccinated as quickly as possible, so. But even having said that, sometimes all of a sudden I get a message that the federal government's done something different with retail pharmacists. But I've just asked the pharmacist, unless they actually have vaccine on site, not to advertise that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, we're not going to have any boards or committee commission reports, and we'll move on to a quick discussion about open mic or open meeting, open comment session?
Yeah, my desire to discuss this topic is really, I think, broken into two pieces. One is the twice-a-month open comment section. Folks have asked us repeatedly, please give us the opportunity to zoom in our comments. And we know that there's lots of ways for people to send their comments, but I think they feel engaged when they can, if they don't want to be here in person, to be here virtually. The other piece is the ability to give comments on an item on the agenda, not an open mic. And I realize we're moving in the right direction. We're moving from red to orange. And hopefully, we're going to drop down again in the next couple of weeks. But I think that our constituents are asking us to have this conversation and to be pretty clear about their desire to have it. And if we don't allow it, I think we need to be transparent on that conversation and decision.
Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
You know, I am supportive of this. I think we all had a little bit of concern about being bombarded with a lot of folks wanting to participate on open mic, public comment period. But that hasn't been the case. I think everyone that has signed up has done so timely as we've requested that they sign up at least by that Monday, 12 noon, so that we actually know how many people are going to be wanting to do their public comment via Zoom. And I think that's great. I love the fact that people want to be able to participate. I think that's the most important thing, and I think that we are transparent. So I certainly am supportive of continuing that. I think one of the comments that we got was that, you know, it's confusing. You said you were going to do it during the month of December, but now it's January, so you're not doing it. So I think in order to be consistent, I believe our citizens have been great and responsible. And I think we should continue it with a public comment going forward, regardless of whether there's a pandemic or not ongoing. I think it's a wonderful way of people to participate in a way that they feel comfortable participating in. And I'd certainly be open-minded to allow people who don't have the ability to get in to the chambers to provide public comment on other agenda items. But I'm certainly incredibly supportive of allowing it for, going forward, for public comment.
Any other comments or questions?
Did you want to make a motion or to that effect? Did you want to divide the question on both, or, because that's how we've done it in the past?
I would divide the question for clarity.
Okay.
Because, but I too support the idea of having open public comment by multiple means. And I know that it will not just provide people a sense of assurance for public health during COVID, but it also will provide folks who are unable to physically get here for any number of reasons, and including the gentleman who did come one evening, and he was in a wheelchair, and the space was not set up for him. He didn't believe in, he left without making comments, because he didn't feel like the space was accessible. So I really do want to give that opportunity to people for a number of reasons. So I would split the question that we allow public, open public comment via Zoom, if they register, right?
If they register timely like we have set up before. I'll second that.
And moved and seconded that we would do this for just open mic for, at this point, right?
That's this question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
And the timing for this would be ongoing?
Yes.
For as long as we are meeting?
Yes. If, I would add one caveat, that if our law department believes that we would need a charter change, that we take a look at that. If we can only do it for a certain amount of time before we change charter, I'd like to leave that open.
Yes, Councilperson Ward.
Just for clarity, because I didn't know we were going to have this discussion, so I feel a little unprepared. I would feel better voting. I know we have a motion out there, knowing what our legal ramifications are rather than voting today. I just would feel better, knowing what we're doing before bringing it to a vote. Because I didn't know we were going to have this discussion, so.
Well, I wasn't sure I was going to add a real motion. I really wanted to hold the conversation. And so I do want input. I'm not trying to stigmatize this.
Have some time to think and get some research.
Okay.
I guess we've been able to do it under the umbrella that of the governor's executive order, and this is a pandemic. I didn't know if you wanted to just restrict it to?
I would say the law department has been clear on a number of occasions that that governor's order does not apply to this body. So I agree that we should step back, give it a week or two weeks, discuss it amongst ourselves, find out more of our legal options, and then make a decision.
I guess next Monday is open mic.
I'll wait my turn.
Okay. Councilperson Cho?
No, no. Councilperson Raybold was in the middle of the statement.
Well, next Monday is public comment, February 8th.
I thought it was on our agenda for today, too, open mic.
It is?
No, I wished it were, but it is not.
No, that did not transfer.
That should have transferred.
I thought so, too.
I was looking at old agenda, but nonetheless, I, yeah, I think we need some time to talk about it together off the dais.
Mr. Chair, that's what I would say. I think, I personally feel that a person who wants to zoom in and has the equipment to zoom in can also email us, if they have the technology to do that. However, the future's going to go toward us having some video comment. I don't think we can solve that today. I think we need to do a little bit more research and spend a little bit more... more research and spend a little bit more time getting it in order. That is, I don't like it, but that is the future we're going to go there eventually. I would also like to entertain the idea, while we're having the conversation about it, is the school board does the public comment early in the meeting. We did hear from a few of our constituents that want to have their public comment, but not wait till 11, 12 o'clock to do it.
That way, it's more...
Maybe we give them a chance to say public comment, and out of the way, and then we can have our meeting. Those are things I think we should talk about away from the dais, in small groups, or set a task force and invite 30 people to be on the task force or something.
Yes, Councilperson Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think, too, to have that discussion, as it doesn't relate to the pandemic, because I do think it is the wave of the future. And I do think we need to have it in those terms, not COVID-related necessarily, because of accessibility and transparency that we're all being asked to be. More of that. So, I would like more time to have those discussions as well. Thank you.
Yes, Councilperson Washington.
So, I'm going to withdraw my motion, because I really wanted the conversation to start today. I also then would like us to discuss specifically allowing testimony on agenda items by Zoom as well.
Okay.
Not just open public comment. So, I think that's all part of the conversation I want to have.
Do you, which are the, your second?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I really, there's like three or four different parts to this.
Right.
That we need to go through. A lot of them, and it's not just during the pandemic. It's going forward on how we move forward with this.
So, just for clarification, we need law to clarify. Can we change? And I like the idea of having public comment at the beginning of the meeting. That would be great for a lot of people who said they cannot stay up that late waiting for us to get to. I think that's a great idea. The second one is, are we going to allow public comment via Zoom? And the third one, are we going to allow people to comment on agenda items via Zoom?
Okay.
So, and we'll have city law clarify all this.
I will, not now. I will look into this, and maybe what I'll do is appoint someone to kind of be the point charge.
Okay.
In this, because we need a single point of contact. We can all discuss and go forward with this.
To herd the cats into having the conversation.
Yeah. And the Unicameral is looking at a bill that was proposed to amend the Open Meetings Act to allow some form of this.
I think our city law...
Yes, I know. I made a comment to our city law department and put my scratches on it as well.
Good conversation. Okay. Anything else for the betterment of our directors? Okay. Seeing none, we stand adjourned until 3 o'clock.